The Town of Burlington will be holding October 7th meeting. The Planning Board is a hybrid meeting due to the expiration of the state of emergency that was issued due to the COVID-19 virus on March 12, 2020. Please note, the option for remote participation via WebEx is being provided as a courtesy to the public. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Those seeking to participate remotely may do so via the following. You can join our WebEx meeting at townofberlingtonwebex.com. Our meeting number is 179-931-5498 and the meeting password is 1645. Join by calling 617-315-0704. The meeting is being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel, which can be found on Comcast Channel 99, RCM 15, and Verizon 41. It's also streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx, the WebEx chat function, and Facebook Live chat function during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask questions or make a comment must identify themselves first.
Thank you, Liz. We have some items being continued up this week's agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7F through 7I together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Item F is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 6.1. Zoning bylaws 207. They were designed as the applicant. Item G is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2. Storage and disposal of oil, fuels, petroleum products pursuant bylaws 207. He would street based they were designed as the applicant. Item H is continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3. Storage of hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals for retail sale. Retail sale of the zoning bylaw 207. He would street based they were designed as the applicant. Item I is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a site plan 207. He would street federal asset trust.
I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of October 14, 2021, as requested by the applicants in an email dated October.
All those in favor? Okay. Moving on to citizens' time. If any audience member in the hearing room wishes to speak, please come up to the table on your left and identify yourself. For those participating remotely, please raise your hand and speak and identify yourself. Moving on to announcements.
So Columbus Day, our Indigenous Peoples' Day is happening on Monday, October 11th. Town hall offices will be closed during that time. The Burlington Housing Partnership will have their meeting on October 13 at 6:00 p.m. and that's via WebEx. The zoning bylaw review committee will also have a meeting on Wednesday, December 13 at 6:30 p.m. via WebEx, or via Zoom, rather. The Burlington Board of Health is offering a flu clinic Saturday, October 16 from 9:30 to 12:30 at the Memorial School. They're asking that everybody sign up and make an appointment. And you can sign up on the Board of Health website or by calling their office. The Town Center Business Open House and Beer Garden. So this is kind of the opening of the Pocket Park that is happening right next to Sweet Ginger. We're trying to kind of, our economic development director, Melissa Tontakas, has been working very hard. And we're trying to do, kind of do a pilot program to see about doing events in the Town Center. And so she's started taking it off on Saturday, October 23 from 12 to 6. She's going to have a Town Center Business Open House and a beer garden in the Pocket Park. And the rain date will be October 24th. And so we're all very excited to see that happen. And then the Southern New England American Planning Association Conference, that's your planning staff, has a conference, a virtual conference, October 28 through Friday, October 29. And we'll be going to those sessions virtually. So that's all for me.
Madam Chair, of course.
I also would like to let everyone know that the Burlington Sculpture Park is planning an event for Saturday, November 6 at 10:00 a.m. We are going to have performances by an ensemble of the Burlington Band, Burlington High School Band, the Burlington High School Chorus, an acrobatic routine by a group called The Red Trousers, and also performances by the color guard of Burlington High School. So we're expecting it to be a really fun event at the Sculpture Park and we encourage everyone to come.
What was the date?
November 6 at 10:00 a.m. It's a Saturday.
Red trousers are not required, or?
Only the people who are performing have to wear red trousers.
Okay.
But if you feel the need, you know, if you want to join in, I'm sure you'd be welcome.
Okay, thank you.
I heard Mike has some great acapella. Anyone else? No, but other, those on, on the WebEx, just if you're not speaking, please mute yourself.
No.
First starts at 8:08 tonight, so go Sox. I can hint everyone. Okay, moving on. Item A is a discussion, a request for extension of a definitive subdivision. 36 Mill Street is a definitive subdivision. Beverly Van Nostrand is the applicant. Does planning staff have any comments regarding the size of item?
So just a bit of background. So this was a subdivision that originally was approved in 2005. Back in 2019, we saw a minor engineering change, just changed the configuration of the driveways into the site. Was pulling up the plan right now. I also sent it in the meeting preview for you guys earlier this week. That 2019 approval expired in May of 2021. We are suggesting, oh, and Beverly Van Nostrand, the property owner, is here. If you'd like to know more information, she can certainly come up. We are, oh, sorry. She is still working with EverSource on the finalizing the driveway locations that exist in the power lines easement. And that has not figured out quite yet. So we are recommending a one-year extension of time to really begin. It hasn't been begun, subdivision hasn't begun yet. So as I mentioned, the applicant is here for questions.
Ms. Nostrand, which of us has a problem and speaks to us?
Hi.
Good evening.
That was approved by you, the all the boards, and I brought it to EverSource, which I had talked with them previously to that, about it. And they saw, thought that would be a great way of doing it instead of me coming around through the power lines. And the engineers rejected it. And at that time, I, the man I was working with is out on a disability. I have a new person to work with now. And I, Kristen will talk with him and he can explain it. He's, he's brand new to it, so he doesn't exactly know what it is. But they just say, linearly, they don't want a driveway to run with, parallel with the power lines. And I told the guy, and my Kristen said, we have cacking lots underneath the power lines, never mind a driveway. So I don't really know what their problem is or why they can do it. And it's just not easy. I have, I thought maybe if I knew a lawyer who dealt a lot with, you know, but they're a big conglomerate. And I haven't had any success with that yet.
So the engineers have rejected it. Which engineers was that, with the EverSource?
EverSource, yes, yeah, yeah. I guess the engineers have to okay it, management okay's it, and do they, they may have some conservation group that has to look at it also to okay it. And the fellow I spoke with today, the brand, the new guy, he said that he didn't, you know, no. I says, did it just start at the engineer's desk? He couldn't give me an answer.
When did you reach out to EverSource? Because we approved this in 2005 and it's 16 years, but so I guess that's my question of why it's.
Well, to start with, I had an approved plan. It's recorded. I've been paying taxes for 17, 18 years on three lots. And I, a buyer came along and I brought it in and it turned, it all turned around. They didn't, I had a shared driveway going around the power lines and they didn't want a shared driveway. So I had to start all over again. And it was still a hassle. So then I went to two lots because I'd had it, you know, I was, felt like I was done. And then, you know, people came to me and says, how can you give up a lot? You know, when you've got all the others, everything's done and you've got three lots, that's a lot of money. And there's been a lot of money put into this already. It keeps going back and forth here, there. And the engineers, just, you know, just do it.
Madam Chair, can we, I don't know if they, but it's, we've already approved it, so, you know, we just take a vote to extend it because she, this needs more time to be able to work out the details of that.
I have another question for stuff.
Sure.
So you said that you hired a new gentleman. Is this person?
I didn't hire him.
Oh.
EverSource hired him.
And he's working with?
What they call licensing.
So do they want you to redesign this lot so that it doesn't, so that it meets their engineers' requirements?
I asked, the fellow's name was, that I was working with, it was Don Oliver. I asked him when they, he says they don't want that parallel driveway. And I says, can you ask them to tell me what they do want? And he says, oh, they can't do that. So it's like, I can't force them to do that. But yeah, it's just, it's been strange.
I understand. It's just, my concern is that if they've rejected it, but they're not telling me what they want. It sounds like you're going to have to go back to them with a new design, but we approved this design.
Correct.
So I'm not sure what we gain by continuing it because I think you're going to end up having to come back to us with a different design.
That could be my ignorance.
No, it's you.
I thought that.
Situation.
Thought that I had to come back.
Absolutely.
I don't.
For the continuance, yes, but it seems like you're probably going to have to come back to us with a different plan than the one we approved.
Well, she does, but it goes away if we don't.
So the, so as I mentioned, so in 2019, they did modify the drive because there, originally there was a drive that went kind of in front and toward the back of those houses, along the back. And then there was a single drive that went around, kind of an outcropping, around the outcropping that was further into the easement. There was an EverSource representative that was part of the discussion in the modified plan. And that's, I think, some of the frustration is EverSource was out here talking about where they prefer it. And then a different group of EverSource said, we don't really like that one. So if EverSource, this ongoing conversation with EverSource, that it may modify the plans more, but that again would be a minor engineering change to modify that driveway location. Whereas if you didn't continue it, she would have to come back to the whole subdivision again.
This, this is all driveways, so it has nothing to do with anything else, but.
So they're not looking for different configuration of lots, just a little driveway?
Just, this is driveway.
Itself is fine, is fine. So they may just want to relocate driveways where that, that's why you extended it.
And, you know, after I get further working with this, this new fellow, maybe he, you know, everybody, it's been a long time. People change, different things happen. Who knows? You know, but we're going to have that talk. And I, you know, I don't know why they can't tell me what they would accept. What, what is this, a guessing game? Do I, am I a cash cow? To just keep throwing money at it? Did I guess right this time? And then I have to come back to you to see, you know, and then you'll want something different, possibly. Oh, it's, it's been a long time.
Just curious, is EverSource's engineer charging you for their time to do this?
I paid, some vendors that were interested before paid them $5,000 to review this. I only paid them $1,000. Yeah, they charge.
I would recommend hiring an attorney.
It, it seems that. I, a theory attorney will always be bigger than my attorney.
There are some very good attorneys in town. And, you know, and I say that to look out for your best interest because if this has been going on this long, you know, this isn't, I don't know what your background is, but they're not involved in planning and real estate. It's not necessarily everyone's wheelhouse. And I would hate to see you be taken advantage of. So I, it would just be my recommendation that, that you might want to look into that.
Oh, I have and I will continue because, you know, I'm not going away. Unless I go away.
Don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere, okay? Does anyone else have any questions or comments? You have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for an extension time for Mill Street. So a definitive subdivision from October 2nd, 2021 to October 7th, I'm sorry, from October 7th, 2021. October 7th, 2022, as requested by the applicant and later dated September 30, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? I wish you the best and I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Oh, good luck.
Thank you. Moving on to matters of appointment. Item A is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.14. Establishments for contractors and such services, but not limited to building, building, maintenance, plumbing, landscaping, electrical, forestry, carpentry, well drilling. Zoning bylaws 37 B Street, Driscoll Burlington, 1969 LLC is the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. The record attorney, Mark Vaughn, here tonight representing the applicant, Driscoll Electric and the related entity, Driscoll Burlington, 1969 LLC, that owns the property at 37 B Street. So with me tonight is Katie Hallahan, who was with, with Driscoll Electric. She's the CFO of the company. And I know she and I are both pleased to be here in connection with the, the project. So a client recently purchased the property, which is located at the end of B Street in Burlington. Again, the address is 37 B Street. Today, there is a single-story commercial building of approximately 7,200 square feet that is on the property. I think you're all probably familiar with B Street in that area, but it is a commercial, industrial area. For the most part, A Street and B Street have a lot of buildings of this type that are commercial in nature and use. So just a little bit about Driscoll Electric. They're a very well-respected electrical contractor, presently has locations in Medford and Mashpee. And do the bulk of their work in the commercial, retail, restaurant, and corporate sector. They intend to occupy about 3,200 square feet of this existing building. It's on the, the right-hand side of the building. They're not talking about any expansion or exterior modifications to it. So their operations here would include office space for approximately six to eight employees and some limited storage of supplies as well. They're not talking about any outdoor storage of materials or, or supplies. So again, they're very excited about being able to locate here in Burlington. It's a very, it's a central location for them in terms of their employees, from what I understand, in terms of, you know, from, from where they travel from and, and live. So an optimal site for them. So the reason why we're here is the zoning bylaws do require a special permit in the IG District for establishments for contractors under 42614. Technically, it says establishments for contractors and such services as building, plumbing, masonry, electrical, et cetera. So since they are an electrical contractor, that's why we filed a special permit. Although, to be honest with you, we wrestle a little bit with whether it's by right, just because what, really how they're looking to use it is more akin to office space. But, you know, just to be safe and make sure that we get the appropriate approval, we, we applied for the, the special permit for the contractor of use. So again, no exterior modifications proposed. They would just be looking to fit up the interior of the building to accommodate their needs. No alteration of the parking that's out there. The existing site has 25 parking spaces that would stay and we're not altering the, the parking requirement either. So be happy to answer any questions or address any comments you might have, but I think pretty straightforward, I hope. But thank you.
A staff to the surroundings of the site?
Just a few. Overall, we don't have a concern about this use in this building. But if you are out there or look at the site on Google Maps, there is a very nice diagram that you're seeing here of all the parking spaces. They're very hard to see on site. So we just want to make sure that the parking spaces are restripped, handicap parking spaces are properly marked. That if there's dumpsters on site, that they're properly enclosed. And that's about it. And you guys are, you're not taking the full building, you're taking part of the building, partial, exactly.
7,200 square feet, that, that's the building size. They'd be occupying 3,200.
Yep. And again, as, as Attorney Vaughn mentioned, there's no heavy machinery parked outside. There's no outdoor storage. All of those things are, will be reflected in the special permit. So really kind of just making sure the outside is compliant with the plan and zoning in terms of striping and dumpster. That's all we have. Otherwise, we're good and we have a decision in your packet to go on if you are so inclined.
I just have a question. Do you have the occupant of the other half of the building?
Yeah, so there's two occupants here now. There's a daycare operation that's on the other portion of the building. The, the location that Driscoll Electric would be going in is currently occupied by a tenant, but, you know, they'd be looking to occupy once that lease terminates, so.
If you're going to occupy a location that was an adult daycare, is that?
That's correct.
Adult daycare is going to.
And there we are.
That's right.
So the, the Jersey barriers will stay up?
Any questions or comments? Please. Is there going to be any retail component?
No.
No, okay. The only other thing is I know that we have in the past, over the past several years, we have been trying to spruce up that area of town. So I was, I'm curious to know if there are any opportunities to maybe add some landscaping?
Absolutely. That is definitely in the plan, certainly.
Actually, I'm familiar with the building. Really nicely kept.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, even like trees in the front. It's kind of really nice setup there.
Two benches, but it can be used a little well.
I agree.
Yeah. So actually, you know, the, the facility that they, that you own down in Mashpee, it's an Echo Drive?
It's Echo Road. It's a very similar setup. So it's a 7,200 square foot building in Mashpee. We built it four years ago and Driscoll Electric is a tenant in that location. We have a separate tenant as well. We take a lot of pride in our, in our commercial buildings. We want to be the best-looking building on the street. So that is certainly in the plans.
Great, thank you. I have no further questions.
We may be back at some point if they, depending upon what happens with the tenant next door to, you know, occupy that. In which event, we'd be back before you if there's any exterior changes proposed, so.
Thank you.
Attorney Vaughn mentioned that there's going to be no outdoor storage. Are you just using it for office space? Is it going to be any store on the inside? Copper wire conduit?
Minor materials, but most of our materials are shipped directly to our job sites. So no outdoor storage at this point.
And nothing indoor?
Minimal, I think about 500 square feet, if that.
Thank you.
This is public hearing. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Anyone? You have a motion, please? Turn it.
In the staff report, there was a, a note about parking layout, mind right place?
Yeah.
In the lab, it's kind of.
The parking lay, well, I, I think we just, since there's not much stripe, we just wanted to understand a little bit of who, who was using what parking? Because as you say, there's a, the building, there's a triangle kind of parking between the, these two buildings and just kind of, just in general, where the main parking fields for this use that between the multiple buildings there.
Yeah, it's a little complicated out here with easements and things, but in, for the, the parking field to the left of the building, that you can, you know, yeah, that, that parking field there, that has 23 spaces. That's the, the vast majority of the spaces that service the building. And the shaded areas to the right, where the two, there's two handicap spaces down at that bottom, yeah, right there. That's also part of the total parking inventory of the 25. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, folks who would be occupying their building, be parking up in that, the larger area than, you know, being able to walk right into the front, so.
And we did, I think we did, I think we already clarified that there, it's really not a place where you get a lot of visitors. It's mostly employees and going out to.
I think there'd be less activity, to be honest with you, from this use than what's out there today, so.
Thank you.
It just keeps me well drilled, well drilling.
Oh, that's because of me. It's part of the, it's funny.
Oh, well. Yeah. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Brendan Driscoll of Driscoll Electric for a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.14. Establishments for contractors in such services as, but not limited to, building, building, maintenance, plumbing, landscaping, electrical, masonry.
Carpentry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Didn't want you to read all of that. Somebody else can take this one.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Brendan Driscoll, Driscoll Electric, for a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.14. Establishes for contractors and such services as, but not limited to, building, building, maintenance, plumbing, landscaping, electric, masonry, carpentry, well drilling of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit the operation of an electrical contractor business within the existing 3,200 plus or minus square feet tenant space used for general office and the storage of residential electric supplies located within the general industry, industrial IG and Acrofer A districts at 37 B Street, subjects to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
601.
601. Welcome to Burlington. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. All right, go Red Sox.
Okay, moving on. Item B is a public hearing. Application for approval of a site plan for 15 Adams Street. Senate Construction is the applicant. Does planning staff have any comments about the site?
Sure. We did have a development coordination meeting with these guys last week. Their site design, they still are working on some drainage questions with the Board of Health, the LSP, and the Conservation Commission. So we do not have any, we, we don't have a decision for you to see. Again, just opening. They do, some of the recommendations we have had is, and also just want to understand in the presentation, they are building a addition to the building. Right now, they do have a bunch of containers outside, which should be for the addition, but just to really clean up the site with those other containers around. Make sure the dumpsters enclosed, restripped, similar to the last, the last applicant, the striping was all gone. And just wanted to plant the seed of discussion, unnecessarily linked to this approval, but we've talked a long time about the Housing Authority parcel, which is the Route 3 layout. And for no other reason than really that, I've been kind of focusing on this property. in terms of, there's Summit Drive, Summit Drive has access easements to the property, but at a certain point, you get X amount of development, and you really need emergency access from another way. And again, I don't want to make this completely part of this discussion with the addition, but want to hopefully start a dialogue with some possibility for emergency access routes, if that is ever in play through these sites. That's all we have right now. Again, they're opening, we're still discussing with departments, and then they have more comments later.
Thank you. Good evening. Would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, yes, hi, I'm Bob France. I'm the President of Senate Construction Corp., and we're representing Filter Sales and Service at 15 Adams Street in Burlington. Both Alan and Tom Blatt, principals of the company, are here, representing themselves, obviously. Dan Hazen is with HSH Associates, who is our civil engineer of record for the project, and he'll be doing the presentation. In addition, I have Steve Sacacini from SAC Environmental to address any environmental questions you may have, and Scott Devine from Senate Construction, who was at the head of department meeting. I couldn't make it, unfortunately. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, because he's the expert, or we're hiring them. We've been hired as the design builder for this addition. Just to give you a real quick overview, Filter Sales and Services has a forty-thousand-square-foot existing building. Due to the nature of the most recent pandemic, their demand for filters has gone through the roof, no pun intended, and they are in dire need of additional storage in order to be able to service all of the demand for their filters. So, with that being said, I'll let Dan take the. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Dan Hazen, I'm with Howard Sun Hudson, civil engineer. Is there any place I can plug in? Is everything on that? Doesn't matter.
I mean, I have all the stuff you've sent me, so if you want.
Presentation plan?
Yeah, sure. If you want to quickly, as we have this, quickly just orient the.
Yeah.
List, can you zoom out just a tiny bit?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes. Just so as she's getting that out, you can kind of orient us to where the site is, if not perfect.
Good. So the site's located on Adams Street. It is south of Millipore Sigma Biotech, that's that big parking lot to the north. There's a few other commercial sites located on Adams Street, just to the north. There's like a horseshoe driveway, right where your pointer is. To the south of it, there's automotive garages, and I believe a exhaust, custom exhaust garage. Across the street is a sand and gravel pit. The nearest residential property is to the south, about six hundred feet, right there on, I believe it's North Street. The site is six acres, it sits up on an old, up off the property, or up off Adams Street, so driveway going up to it. Currently, as Bob said, there's forty thousand square foot building, of which eight thousand square feet is office, and about thirty-two hundred square feet is warehouse. There's the entrance going up into the property. There's currently sixty-one parking line spaces. Parking requirements is for twenty for the office and thirty-three for the warehouse. So, per zoning regs, fifty-three parking spots are required. The site is connected to town water and sewer. Currently, stormwater from the site flows basically unabated from the site down Adams, down the driveway to Adams Street, for the front portion, the entrance there, and the rear portion of the site, and the south side, flow to the wetland just off-site to the southwest corner. Proposal tonight is to permit a twelve thousand square foot addition. Of that, we're planning to construct eighty-seven hundred fifty square feet now, with the ability to construct another thirty-five hundred square feet later. In doing so, we would increase parking spaces to sixty-six parking spaces to accommodate the additional warehouse storage area along the back and along the side. We are not proposing to do any additional work to the south or to the east, the south, or the west of the existing building. All the construction would be located to the rear of the property. One hydrant would have to be relocated, and that would be the extent of the utility upgrades. Stormwater would flow to two catch basins in the rear of the site, which would flow to a sediment four-bag, onto an infiltration galley. Soil tests were done, I believe, back in June or July, found some nice gravel soil. Any overflow from that would flow overland in the current direction that the flow is going now, down to that wetland, or that isolated wet area to the southwest. All instructions outside of the hundred-foot well and buffer. We would be increasing the floor area ratio from currently on site. It is a point one-four, we would be increasing it to a point one-nine, which would, we have included a traffic study in the submittal. Of the, the whole site currently has, traffic counts were done back in June. We have a total of a hundred and eighty-eight vehicle trips in and out of the site. The peak hour for the site was from seven AM to eight AM, and then from three PM to four PM. That current trip generation of a hundred and eighty-eight is lower than the ITE trip generation manual, which for this use would specify a hundred and ninety-eight trips. Also, the peak hours for the site of seven A to eight A and three P to four P do not overlap the area, the peaks in the area, which flow from seven forty-five to eight forty-five in the morning, and then from five to six in the evening. So, the site peak is earlier than the, the actual area peaks. One of the. By the addition, addition's not to increase truck traffic. It's basically to be able to store all the material right now that they've been using and storing in the trailers outside. This way here, everything can be contained within the building. We're not anticipating any increase in vehicle trips. I believe they mentioned they might increase the employees by two to three, so that wouldn't be a large increase in the, in the traffic to the site for vehicles.
For what?
About thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thank you.
That plan that's on the screen right now is a turning radius plan for a fire truck for the Burlington, either ladder or tower truck. And we designed it so that the largest vehicle that they have can navigate around the building unimpeded. That would be, you have any questions at this point?
Up to the board, does anyone have any questions or comments at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. How many shipping containers do you have on site now? Six shipping containers. Maybe I'll ask the staff. How do we get ahead of people putting shipping containers on site with approval here first? That's the best way to do that. Because I mean, a couple other applicants who seem to have shipping containers, so we put it there, and then it's kind of a given.
Yeah, we've been working with the Building Department. You do need a building permit to have one. Sometimes you have one on a temporary basis. Sometimes a temporary basis becomes a much longer than temporary basis, but just overall, this is policy, we've been working with the Building Department to make sure that's not happening. Some of these historic ones that have been here for a very long time, we're hopeful that, just as this applicant, they're building the addition so they can get rid of everything. But overall.
So it sounds like to me that the applicant either didn't know that you need a building permit, because you have six of them, right? One, you know, temporary, kind of stand, but now you're kind of putting another building there, shipping containers, you might as well, you know, housing there or something like that, right? You've seen that news, shipping containers, Airbnb, you know, shipping containers. So, maybe to ask the applicant, how many players are out there that provide shipping containers to folks like you? Couple of major players?
Probably five or six.
Okay. All right. Maybe if you knew the names of those in context, maybe we can give that to the building inspector, and they can, you know, send a letter to these five or six and say, just to let you know, here's the policy with Burlington in that any applicant looking to put one in Burlington, you need to put into your process that they need a building permit before you can ship them.
Yeah, I mean, if it's there anytime over a year, it's, it's a code that you guys, under a year, temporary, as I said.
Maybe, like we do with the, with the, maybe folks in certain districts send a letter out just, you know, to let them know that shipping containers are not by right. But the policies with that, they have to be, it's like that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I have just a question, where this is a historic contamination area. Is, is there any way you're going to change anything as far as that's concerned? It's going to be more parking or anything else that we need to consider?
But I think they did say that they were going to be increasing their parking to sixty-six spaces for their first phase. Have you done an environmental test of this area?
My name's Steve Sacacini with the Safe and Environmental.
If you could approach, please. This topic is one of the topics that's still ongoing when, oncoming Board of Health. That's one of the reasons why we're not working.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Well, I really didn't, if the Board of Health is on it, I really don't need much more than that, but we do have to be careful, because our, most of our water still comes from our wellfields.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are communicating directly with the Board of Health. We have, to answer your question directly, we have not done testing, but there's plenty of data on the site. The former owner or responsible party for the legacy contamination that's there continues to do testing. And the site is at a point now where cleanup's been completed, in their opinion, meaning the responsible party's opinion and their contractor, and now is in a mode of monitored natural attenuation, which is a monitoring over time. We have not done testing, but we have looked at what is there for legacy contamination and what's left after the removal actions that were done, after the groundwater treatment filtration that is done, that's all stopped, and now they're dealing with residual. Is that the area of the proposed addition and stormwater management area? Is that a location where, for the most part, the current data, meaning 2020, shows non-detect levels of contaminants of concern? And most of the remaining residual contamination at elevated levels is about three hundred feet away, probably off the southeast corner of the building? Oh, is that?
Well, no, no, it would be me.
Oh, that would be her.
Southeast corner, so over here, down the bottom?
Southeast. Yeah, right over, right.
Towards Adams Street. Okay, thank you.
There is a well that was decommissioned in 1999 for reasons unknown, that, that was the last set of data that has some elevated concentrations. And we're, we consider that a data gap. And that is where that decommissioned well, that data gap, where a portion of the stormwater management system would be. So, we're starting to work with the Board of Health to see specifically what their, I'll call, performance standards are to make them feel comfortable on the complete analysis.
Okay, well, it's good to know that, because this is really quite preliminary. This is for more information, which is good. Yes. We look forward to seeing, continuing with that, attention to the water.
Anyone have any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Does anyone, certainly in the audience, have any questions or comments? Any motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of October 14, 2021. We're not closing it with continuing. I didn't mess up twice. I did mess up twice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. See you October 14?
Okay, thank you.
What?
It's the.
You're a week early.
You're a week early, October 23rd.
April 21st.
Sorry, I knew it was a month and six weeks to the party. Okay, the 21st, so amend the motion to, I'd like to amend the motion, Madam Chair, to continue the meeting to October 21st, 2021.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not coming back.
Yes.
Crazy.
Yes. All right, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven E and seven D together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All is in favor?
Is it C? Oh, sorry, seven C and seven D.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to stop talking.
Please don't. We're moving things along. Item C is a public hearing, application for approval of an amendment to a special permit pursuant to 4.3.2.22, drive-through the zoning bylaws, 28 Wind Street, Bonny Stone, Incorporated is the applicant. Item D is a discussion, application for approval of minor engineering change, 28 Wind Street, Bonny Stone, Incorporated is the applicant. Does staff have any comments regarding these items? So, just before, is anyone, you asked if anyone's here? Is anyone here on behalf of this, this item?
Yes, Bill Lucas with Bowler, and Lisa Dempsey, the applicant.
So I just wanted to make sure we had everyone in the room. I appreciate that. Comments, yes? We have some just comments on the new configuration, kind of really trying to understand what's happening down there now, as well as how this improves those issues. So, one of the things that we've been kind of going back and forth with the engineer this week is just really to understand the current queuing that's happening, and happening on to Wind Street, and how this proposed plan kind of solves those issues. We did, we do have a plan that shows how many cars can fit in the drive-through, but we don't have really the understanding of how many cars are out there and how many cars need to fit to resolve the issue. So we are looking for additional data on that analysis of a traffic memo including that queue length, pre and post conditions. We also have with that, in terms of the queuing and expected trip generation, one, how much parking they are utilizing now, how much they need. This technically is overparked, but I don't want to underpark it and then have more of an issue either. So, we just really want to understand the real-time utilization of the site a little bit more to then direct and give informed guidance to the site plan. And applicant, a little bit concerned with the single in and out, because we don't know what's happening with the queue and other things. So, just, again, want to understand that a little bit more. There's been some discussion about having a safe crossing, because there is a lot of pedestrian cross, traffic across Wind Street near this location. So just kind of taking a look at that. And then, just generally, I'd like to understand a little bit more about how this double drive-through works as it kind of queues into a single to pick up. So. So those are my comments for now. I'm sure we'll hopefully get more data, but that's questions we want to throw out there. Great. Would the applicant like to share with us their plans of this site?
Absolutely. Bill Lucas with Bowler, formerly Bowler Engineering, representing Monies Donuts, and Lisa Dempsey, who is here as the applicant. Just, you know, let me step back. In terms of the genesis of this was our applicant had understood that there were some issues occurring during the pandemic, specifically when customers didn't have the ability anymore to enter the building and therefore they were experiencing an increase of vehicle traffic to the drive-through portion of their site. At that point in time, as you know, the existing site has a single drive-through lane located at the rear of the site. So with the plan in front of you, the rear is top of the page or the northern portion of the site. And the traffic enters the site on the right-hand side or the eastern side. It is a, it is a full movement driveway. Correct. And traffic would then circulate counterclockwise from that entry point to the drive-through and follow around the rear of the building where they would pick up their order and then exit back onto Wind Street. So with that said, we understood that there's an issue and there was vehicles stacking to the point where they were extending onto Wind Street, causing safety issues. So we were brought in to try to look at this issue and how can we resolve it? The, the first suggestion was to implement a proposed side-by-side drive-through order point, which you can see not so clearly, but there is, yes, that is exactly the location where there are two menu boards where few traffic now, not in a single lane, but in two separate lanes could come up, make their orders and then proceed in, to the left or to the west, where they would merge from a stopped condition. So, you know, I, I've worked on other projects and specifically McDonald's and I've had a lot of experience with the side-by-side operation where there's always concerns about the safety of those stopped vehicles then merging together and then making that order. And in no situation, it is, it is a very safe situation where you, you're not going to experience somebody going from zero to sixty to try to get in front of the other person. They, it is usually controlled because they're taking orders from one menu board or the other, not simultaneously. And then those tra, that traffic moves forward, makes their pickup and then can leave. What we've, what we've done, which is a slight change from the site plan you had received as part of the original application, is just prior to the building, after the menu board, but prior to the building, we've included what is, you know, quote unquote, an emergency exit or, you know, a bypass lane that would allow somebody who had made an order or no longer wishes to make an order can leave the facility through the main parking field, which has been reconfigured from the original condition and, and not have to wait that additional time to go through the pickup window and exit back onto Wind Street. Stepping back, in terms of the parking itself, I know that was brought up as a comment. There are twenty-nine parking spaces on the site currently. You are only required to have thirteen. So it, it is true, we are overparked, but in this scenario, we have also, you know, eliminated two spots from our previously proposed plan to include that bypass, that emergency exit from the drive-through. So we are actually back down to thirty total parking spaces, which is one more than existing currently. And we also provided to the northeastern side of the proposed parking lot, you'll see a striped area at the end of the parking stalls where it is not necessarily designated for parking, but we left it available to any oversized vehicles to have the ability to park if they can't fit into a normal parking space stall.
I'm sorry, I'm trapped here. I, I think it's just, there was a little confusion. You said there's twenty-nine currently and then you said that there was thirty and then you dropped down. I didn't, did I misunderstand or?
I misunderstood. I don't understand.
Can you go through that ten for us, please?
Absolutely. So thirteen are required.
Right.
Twenty-nine exist out there today.
Okay.
The original application, we came in, showed thirty-two, but the plan in front of you tonight shows thirty.
Got it. I see by one.
Okay, so increased by one plus that additional oversized vehicle striped area. So we're not considering that as parking at all as part of that thirty, but it is available.
Thank you.
No problem. Let me see. So a, as part of this development, you know, we're also challenged with the fact that to the north and the east of our site, there is existing wetlands and wetland buffers. So part of our proposal is, was to not expand any of the parking or the drive-aisles beyond the limits of the existing pavement and curbing that is out there today. So that further restricts our ability to go ahead and expand and, you know, add additional lanes or provide additional queue length for the stacking out there. If you don't mind flipping to the next slide and backing out, this gives you a little bit of an example of the queuing that's occurring out there today. What we are calculating i, i, in this plan in front of you is roughly twenty to twenty-one cars to be queued from the pickup window through the order boards and back out to a point that would not block the quote-unquote intersection from where traffic would want to come into the site and either make a decision to park or to go to the drive-through portion of the site. So we're talking twenty to twenty-one. That is roughly eight to nine cars stacked that you previously did not have on the site because it was a single lane operation. So from that standpoint, we're, we're close to, you know, a forty, forty-five percent increase from what was out there today. And that doesn't include in the, you know, unusual situation, additional cars stacking beyond that point and entering onto Wind Street. You'd probably have to be close to, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine cars stacked on the site completely before any cars would be stacked onto Wind Street. So look, just to summarize what's going on here, we're, we're looking at this as the applicant had seen an issue. They wanted to address it for themselves, the customers and the community. We think we've put together a plan that increases the capacity of the drive-through, again, by an initial eight to nine queuing spaces. We've also increased the efficiency of the orders and service at the menu board. And Lisa could speak to that a little bit more. I, I'm, I'm, I do not confess to be an expert on that at all. But it, it's my understanding that the new menu boards that will be in, included on this site are more modern. They assist with the mobile, the mobile service, the mobile ordering, and that allows them to increase or decrease the time of the orders that they would take on the site. And the last part is that we're increasing the capacity of the parking on the site. We, we, you know, we, we've tried to exhaust all efforts to increase the capacity for vehicles and vehicle traffic on a very small site in, in an effort to, you know, provide an additional service to the customers and, you know, safety to the community.
Thank you. Ms. Dempsey, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Lisa, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Sorry. Hello, good evening. Thank you for your time. I just want to let you know that since we put the double lane in, we have not seen any cars on Wind Street, which is great. Before, when we had the single lane, you know, it, you know, we would sometimes see three to five cars queue up, but I'm happy to say over the year, we haven't had any issues. I haven't had any complaints. The only complaints I'm getting are frustrations from the customers because they're merging into one ordering point. So they definitely addressed that with me multiple times to fix this issue. I feel that by putting a second ordering point will make it more efficient and safer and a better direction and flow for the customers.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I also have here, representing us, Rich Vincent. He's from corporate. And if you need any more information regards to the mobile ordering, he's here to speak about that.
Thank you. If you'd like to share with us your thoughts on the site, please do so.
Certainly, thank you. I, I think Lisa put it to the point. We're trying to solve our efficiencies and guest flow. The technology's here, all right? They're already using digital menu boards, order confirmations to the digital side of it. And the mobile customer is here to stay. We feel that the technology package that we offer, the, the franchisees, allow for, you know, future. And we, we think you have an efficient way. Lisa's already running very efficient. She exceeds the speed of service in the marketplace. And her team is dedicated to driving traffic through the drive-through, so. Any questions?
Thank you. I will say, this is a, a very hot topic on the Burlington Facebook residents page. I will tell you that. And the frustration is real as a, a mom of toddlers. You know, if, if I got to the middle of that lane, I, I guess my biggest question is, if I'm in between those two lanes, how are you going to know that my five-year-old strawberry frosting with sprinkles is going to be the best that I get once I get to that end line? Because that, that's a real struggle as well.
Well, well, Lisa, it runs a very efficient operation and Patrice and the team is dedicated. It, it's all about consolidating the order. And, and quite frankly, we're picking up seconds, right? So there, there's a, a lot of efficiencies happening on the inside of the building, right? I think they do a great job of trying to control the flow. The, the guest ordering standpoint is, is going to be faster with the digital platform. And then the mobile opportunities that present themselves. So a mobile guest could place their order and in due time, the menu board will recognize the order once the car gets the property. It's called frictionless. So there, there's a lot of benefits to adding a second ordering point. But what Lisa and her team does is really kind of drive the flow. And like I said, she exceeds the speed of service for, for the area and the market.
That all just about. Does anyone else on the board have questions or comments?
I don't, I don't know if who was on the board, if I know where he was on, Paul was on. I, I remember when the vote was taken back when this was tried to be requested and I was either the sole vote against it or I was one of two votes against it. And it was for this exact reason, because they were, we were told. And I, I want to preface this whole thing by saying, Andy Moniz runs one of the most efficient operations I've ever seen. They're clean, they have a phenomenal restroom, they have a phenomenal business. You know? Can't say enough about how he runs his operation at the end. I said, when this was asked for, it wasn't going to work. And we were told, this is how many minutes or seconds each one of these orders is going to be and this is how it's going to back up and this is how it's going to be. And the numbers didn't work in my head and I voted against it. And from day one, we've had problems. Have more problems now than ever. And then all of a sudden, they, they took a drive aisle that was an exit drive aisle and turned it into a second.
Scared the living.
Yeah, I turned it into a.
I said, great boss.
You can't get out.
I was going to go up and tell.
Well, so, and, and the problem is, it may be overparked, but what I can't for the life of me figure out, I've been there and there's been a few people inside. You know, the, the, the drive-through was a fall, only a few people inside, literally only a few people sitting inside, and the whole parking lot is parked from spot taken. I, I can't figure out if people are parking there and leaving and going somewhere else because the, the numbers don't really make any sense as far as the amount of cars that are in there on a regular day.
Is there a bus stop near there?
I don't know. No.
Well, it's mostly employees because we like to be overstaffed because our main concern is having streets out to Wind Street. So therefore, we like to overstaff.
Right, but if you have like, basically, you're, you know, effectively thirty spots, twenty-nine spots, how many employees are there at any given time? Because that's.
Well, we have bakers, we have managers. We, you know, in a given morning, we can have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen people.
Yeah, so, so again, you get twenty-nine spots, they're almost all taken. The big problem is, and again, this is, and I've said it to Chris, I've said it many times, as much as I hate it because I love the, the way he does business down there. He has a good, it's a nice looking building, everything is really efficient. But when they took that exit aisle out of there and then had parking spots right up to the drive-throughs, there was literally no way to get out. If you went in and parked, you know, in the, in the spots near the building and tried to get out, you had to do a ten-point turn to turn around, backing up with people coming out of the building. I'm surprised someone hasn't gotten killed.
I know, exactly. That's why we'd like to change this. You're, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, can't say enough good things, but that is a horrible setup over there. And I don't know what is going to fix it, but.
We're trying.
Drive aisle, right, but two drive aisles. It's still backing up and it's, it's just creating more of a, so. I don't know, it's, it's almost something you have to see and experience and, and try to figure something. If this, I don't know if that'll be the answer, but, you know.
I've been there when it's the two lengths and it's gone out to Wind Street. And, you know, and, and while I joke about, you know, getting my chocolate frosting or strawberry frosting, whatever the day is, like, it, it is, it is a struggle and, and a lot of residents have voiced a concern about it. You know, I think that, that a traffic study is in order. So if you could obtain a traffic study, I think that that would be very beneficial for us to understand. I think also because I've been the mom that said, I'm not waiting in that madness. I've parked across the street and then ran over, but there's no crosswalk. So I think that's a safety.
Very dangerous.
That's a safety concern as well. You know, and, and you said you had twenty-nine going up to thirty spaces. If you're required to have thirteen, you're using fourteen to fifty to stack.
That doesn't work.
It's, you know, your, your delta's right there, you know? So it's, you know, that's, that's a little bit of concern.
Want this to work.
Oh, great.
I mean, I just love the way he, his operation is run. I, I, I can't say enough about it, so. But it's just, we're going to have to figure it out. And I don't know if this is the answer or not. You must have to be there and see what's going on to figure out whether, whether it's going to work.
Yes, I, I think that the first step is probably obtaining a traffic study.
Interior tracks, that is what you're talking about?
Yeah, probably interior and exterior. Because we, you know, we need to understand, you know, who's actually going in there during peak times, weekends, weekdays, you know? And, and how that's, how, how the traffic flow is actually, you know?
I wonder if the police, I wonder if the police department have any log records of, because I know when the traffic queues out onto Wind Street, I hear, I know there are complaints and they, and they sometimes send the cruiser down there to try and alleviate the problem.
I'm sorry, I'm not aware of this at all. I haven't received any complaints, so if someone could just fill me in on that.
I, I don't know.
Well, we haven't received any comments from the police department. We, we don't have any departmental reports, but once we do, of course, you know, you'd be able to obtain a copy of those. And you can always call the Burlington Police Department and ask if there's been any complaints specifically for a property.
Okay.
Help you out.
It is, is there any consideration of parking your employees off-site? If you're only going to end up with thirteen parking?
Well, they're required to have thirteen. So if they have thirty, about fifteen are used for staff, then that goes to fifteen.
The math members fifteen, normally it's twelve, thirteen. Yeah, but I'm just adding a few more just to be safe.
Sure, but then we appreciate that.
Yes, I thought it was a church almost across the street. And I thought that they would be happy to take a small amount of money and give them a certain number of spots for their help. And, you know, that might be one way out.
We, we actually do have an agreement with them and we do give them donations, but they're very limited. but they're very limited with their time and when we can park there. And it's also a safety concern for my employees to be walking at four-thirty, you know, two AM, four-thirty, six o'clock in the morning when it's dark out.
I'm aware of that, but I just thought I'd bring it up because I, you know, and look at that. It's really nice to deal with problems that are a result of success. Many times we're trying to figure out for people how to increase their business and so forth.
Oh, suffering.
Was that, was that your speech? But, but that was the building I wanted the town set. When they rented the Dunkin' Donuts, I said, it's a prime location, you know. And they built a building that, you know, it could be put in a residential area.
Sure.
You know, so I think they should be commended for that. But, you know, you do have to do a little backing up and back and forth and so forth. But, you know, if you want your caffeine.
Sure, you can do anything for it if you haven't slept all night.
Oh, your strawberry doughnut with the sprinkles on top.
Exactly, exactly. Or you have screaming chili, one of the two.
It's gonna be, if I'm interested, it's gonna be interesting to see how that, the first time I went in and saw a car coming from the right, I was really startled. I think there should be some signage there, more than there is now, at least, until people get used to it. You know, caution, cars entering from the right.
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, as previously stated, I think, you know, we should look into a traffic study. You know, if we could have the engineer provide us with a bit more of a comprehensive queuing plan for the two drive-through lanes. I think that would be helpful. And then again, the crosswalk going across the street, you know, and to remember Raymond's point. You know, if you've had some of your staff, you know, I understand the two AM, the four AM folks. I actually worked at your establishment when I think I was fifteen years old or sixteen years old. So I made the donuts too. You know, those two AM, those four AM folks, you know, maybe they park on-site, but those folks that are coming in at, you know, your eight o'clock, your seven o'clock shifts. I think it may be safe for them to walk across the street, you know, of course, assuming there's, it's not horrible and such. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions and comments. I guess I'll start with my comments. Not only your mom's parked across the street, but the oversight vehicles parked across the street. So you have a lot of people that are either in a rush, don't wanna wait in the line, and the oversight vehicles that just can't park there, do block across the street. Talking about that crosswalk, I think if, I'm gonna pull you with this, I think we should really put pedestrian light like we had put on Cambridge Street, crossing the car dealership. Sure, starting from crossing the bus stop.
Sure.
You know, I have one where I work and you hit the button, there's beeping going on, you've got the lights going on. So it's really good because, you know, the folks that are in that position that cross Win Street, you know, they need their caffeine, they're dotting across there. It's been a very dangerous spot there. So what I would ask the police report to actually put in, how many accidents they've been in that spot? So how many numbers over the years, always good to get if that can be put into the police report. My experience with the two lanes coming in now, most people naturally go to the right lane. And if you do try to go to the left lane, try to, there's three or four cars up there on the right. You try to be a nice guy and go to the left, you'll get, you know, some gestures at you and language because it looks like you're trying to cut in. So it doesn't work that way. It might work better this way if you have the two lanes going in together and then separate ordering, because it's just not working now, because everyone just stays in the right. And again, if you try to jump that, you know, folks that are having issues in the morning will tell you a problem. So that's not nice for the neighborhood even. I just asked the applicant, what are your busiest times and what are your busiest days?
Our busiest times, our peak, I would say from six AM to about nine, nine AM. Later in the week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Which kind of your, what's your, what's your mad eye, are with it, is it seven-thirty or something, or?
I would say seven-thirty sounds right, seven, between seven and nine. Two hours during the day.
I'm just trying to make your peak, you usually have revenue too, right? So what's your, what's your peak time, top?
The top peak, Rich, what would you say? I would say between seven and nine, right, Robbie?
Oh, it's kind of a little more.
Six-thirty to nine?
Six, nine.
I was trying to get a little more granularity off you. Right now, I mean, you can tell by your revenue, can, look how that goes, what's your, what's your peak, what's your top?
Six-thirty to nine, I would say, right now. It's, you know, every season's different, during the summer, it's a little later.
So I would imagine that you have revenue by hour. Okay, and does that vary between six to nine, or is it constant?
It's constant. We average about two minutes per transaction per customer. And we have about.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, okay.
Just the other, the question I have, where's the dumpster located now or where is it gonna be located with the reconfiguration?
The dumpster is currently staying where it is. I'm not sure if you want to show them where it is, Bill?
Yeah, it's on the east side of the site, if you flip back to the, yeah, correct. East side of the site, just a little north of the three parking stalls that are on that same side.
Thank you.
That's correct.
And I guess my last question is with regard to the mobile ordering. If I understood that correctly, the mobile ordering is also gonna go in the drive-through? And it gets recognized at the, at the ordering island?
The technology is, I would say, in development for complete frictionless. For where the guests come into the property. Recognize that once up on, there's two sets. The mobile orders can be placed and the guests can come through the drive-through and bypass the ordering point, right? The system will recognize that guest when it gets to the, when they pull up to the ordering. Which gives the staff of probably about twenty seconds at start, right? In preparing their order. And then in the future, right, we see geo-tracking where you could place an order seven minutes ahead of it. Once your car comes on property, it would, it would tell the staff that, Jim, your order is, or the guest is here, please prepare the order. So there's just ordering efficiencies that will continue to evolve on the mobile sector. And then the ordering points are helping with efficiencies and drive-through point.
So let me understand this. So your, your model for mobile ordering today, let's say, is for people to park and park a lot and go in, right?
They have the choice of, they can pick up orders without getting out of their car, or they can come in and pick it up.
And the model going forward is to have everyone go through the drive-through and don't even bother coming to the store? Is that the, that's your, kind of your end state of ordering?
I think it's about the access points for the guest, however the guest chooses to use us. So just making as many access points is the goal. But yeah, frictionless is the future.
Okay, so we're looking at, they're looking to push that through the drive-through then?
Trying to make it as easy and as efficient for the guest as possible.
So in your instructions for your mobile, you, are you currently saying go through the drive-through or just saying take either one? Or maybe even in the future, are you gonna say, hey, just don't even bother coming in, just go through the drive-through just to make it easier?
So it really depends upon the configuration of the store. But in this case, the guest can choose to walk in and pick up, or curbside, or pick it up to the drive-through.
Yes, downtown with the madness we have, downtown does. Driving your mobile orders to the drive-through is gonna make that even.
Doesn't like it be worse.
This one's too. So I just, how do we look to the future as planners?
Sure.
With that in mind. You know, I can, I just, to be honest with you, I just came from, so this is what my brain is right now, is that kind of queue it in a little bit, you know, again, the parking space is getting off. You can have a longer queue, so getting.
That's what I was just thinking, you're gonna have to try to find a longer queue. Get them somewhere in a ring road, not around, or somehow keep them on-site and keep them off.
Trying to think of, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just, I just want to address that again, the concerns about the queue itself. So, you know, this is a good, high-volume business. And there are a lot of trips being made to this facility. We're proposing a parking field that has the minimum thirteen parking spaces, plus the other fifteen or sixteen that they need for their employees. So that's twenty-eight and we're providing thirty. So we, we have maxed out at the parking to provide enough manpower, employee power, to Lisa at the facility to turn around the efficiency of the orders as fast as possible for those in the drive-through by providing the maximum amount of, and at the same time, minimum amount of parking spaces for both the customers and her employees. So the parking field is pretty much the parking field that we're proposing here. We really can't shrink it any more than we're talking about. And we can't expand it any further because of the fact that we are bounded to the north and the east on this site by wetlands. So therefore, we've now then defined what the drive-through has to look like and by using the remainder of the site itself. We're showing landscaped and curved islands along the northern edge of our parking field to define our parking field limits with respect to the limits of the drive-through itself. So there shouldn't be any more confusion with respect to any vehicles on the site that are currently having some issues with where to go because, you know, they temporarily closed the formerly exit lane and changed that to a drive-through lane. So now what we're doing is we're gonna expand, you know, the queue length and queue volume for that drive-through from almost double what it is now. And I'm hearing concerns about we need more queuing beyond that and we need more parking. So I just want to understand where we're going with all this. We're in a very limited space. We have an applicant that is on her own will trying to solve issues with respect to their business, their customers, and, you know, the safety of that traffic out on Win Street. And I'm not sure that by providing a traffic report after all of this, that it's going to show anything that beyond what we're talking about now. And if we continue to push this back further, I think, you know, we're still gonna run into continued issues on the site. So I, I just want to understand, you know, more clearly, you know, what kind of, you know, queuing diagram that I need to put together to show more than twenty spaces that are here? Or what kind of parking layout that would be more beneficial to the layout that is out there now that's causing problems with the site? So I feel like the proposal in front of you is addressing all of these items and, but we're kind of skipping over it and not, I don't hear any real, you know, argument besides, you know, there's, there's an issue with oversized vehicles parking across the street. Lisa has no, you know, control over those people to do that. You know, that should be an enforcement issue and not necessarily negatively opposed on Lisa.
I'm gonna stop you here. I think that what we had asked for is a parking study for, you know, the parking space on the property and on the exterior of the property. And, you know, we want to make sure that the people who are visiting this establishment are safe. So we talked about a light, we talked about a crosswalk, we talked about potentially parking in other areas. I don't think, I mean, I think if you come back when you said, I don't think you're gonna find anything new, I want to know that we aren't going to find anything new. That we have checked all of the boxes and we're making sure that we're doing everything possible so that we're offering a safe opportunity for this owner and for the neighborhood. You know, I joked that in the beginning, that this, this facility and the parking and the folks that are, you know, are parking on Win Street to come to the establishment, it's a point of contention on a Facebook group. It is. We hear about it all the time. And we appreciate the fact that you're being proactive and coming forth because, you know, I would hate to see somebody actually get hurt or there'd be accidents or something along those lines. And, you know, we're not here to work against you, we're here to work together. So we're asking for the parking study, the traffic study, excuse me. We're asking to discuss other safety opportunities. And then when you get those, come back to us. And then we'll have this discussion again and then we'll report. So I don't want you to get upset. We're, they're here to work together. And does anyone else have anything else they would like to share? Members, stay out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to say I do like the idea of adding another ordering point because a lot of the pain and frustration, as you know, with the, when you added the second lane was the right side would fill up and everyone would be afraid to go to the left side because they feel like they're cutting, but that's what they were supposed to do. So I do like that addition. I just wish we could, and I know this is probably an impossible ask, I'm just thinking out loud, I wish we could have seen the difference in the queuing capacity in lines from before. You turn that other lane around to add that second lane to after you put it in. Even though there was pain and people didn't really understand to go in both lanes, I think that second ordering point will cause a lot of that problem. And I would also like to see the traffic study and just see, just to make sure, just to check the box to make sure we're a hundred percent doing our due diligence on it. That's all, the only reason why I want to see it. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
One of my questions was just answered, didn't, in the fact you said there's going to be a curb between the, a physical barrier, curb, whatever, between the parking area and the two new drive-through lanes, correct?
That is correct. And actually, it may be a little more clear on the, if you don't mind going back to the first exhibit.
Okay, I'm actually looking at the plan, but that's, but my attention to it. I think the parking arrangement now is going to be better than it is, obviously, because there's not gonna be that conflict between the second drive-through lane. And, and, I mean, this is a, even though we seem to be getting into quite a discussion here, this is a, this is, you're a victim of your success and that's great. I mean, as long as we can together solve the problem. Because there, there, there could be a point where the, where the business is just too busy for the size of the site. So I don't know how you would handle that. And I think Bill was talking about in the future, if you add, if you're pushing towards mobile ordering, then yeah, maybe you have to figure out how to make the queue longer. And that might mean reconfiguring the whole site. But he was just, I think, thinking ahead, my response to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So just in terms of the traffic study, we're not looking for this, you know, big ITE study of how many more people are gonna come because you have additional development, that's not at all. What we're really looking for is understanding this location. I mean, they have sales data, they know how many people are coming in and how many people are going to the drive-through. And we just really need to understand the utilization of the drive-through now, in this future. And you can put eight or nine more cars in the drive-through. Is that what we need to solve the issue? So I think it's just really, it's not a big full-blown traffic study. It's really verification of this design, understanding the operations as they exist and just confirming that these designs are going to handle that operation. And where they have things they can control, like mobile ordering and where you pick up or you go carry out, or sorry, not carry out, where they bring it out to you. So you don't have to go in. You know, I think it would be helpful to understand those options a little bit more and how you are able to control those options. Meaning that if it was, you know, at this store, if it was all of the mobile ordering, have to go through the drive-through, first contact, plus kind of deliver your car, is, does that kind of break the system? And if it does, then maybe we go back to, you pull in, you park and they bring it out to you. I don't know exactly how it works, but understand that a little bit more so we understand the points where you do control how the site works and how circulation can best work best. So, I mean, that's really what we're looking for and it's really unique data from you guys, the store, how many people are coming, when they're coming, and how it works. So. So, um, and we're happy to talk more offline after this meeting, but, um, you know, it's, it's more of kind of a memo of how it works, how this design will alleviate all the issues that we've experienced. And as mentioned, I think the double drive-through worked a little bit better, um, that you have now, but it, the confusion factor of it is, you know, in there that which this does clarify. But it, again, it's just really confirming what's happening and what this plan will do, so. Thanks. This is the public area, and does anyone in the audience have anything, any questions, comments? No one?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter in the planning meeting of October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
All those in favor?
I mean, hi.
We will see you back on the twenty-first, folks. Have a great evening, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, as a continued application for approval of a different subdivision for Redmond Street, Murray Hills Incorporated is the applicant. Yes, please, please.
We need my, my board, or is?
No board will be in this.
Great.
Let me know where, what page you want. Good evening.
Evening.
Introduce yourself.
Yes.
Um, Philip Sattle here, representing, uh, Murray Hills Somerset Realty Trust with Dave Romero, the engineer of bracket for the subdivision plan.
Okay, uh, thank you. So, we, we've been before, I think most of the members here are somewhat familiar with the plan. So, we're back with a, a different configuration, a different arrangement. And what we have is in the, uh, two existing lots and existing right-of-way, known as Redmond Street. And we are providing safe access to the lots, and in doing that, we want to improve the roadway. And by improving the roadway, we want to extend the pavement approximately two-hundred-and-forty feet from where it is now. And we're proposing an eighteen-foot-wide paved surface with the full turnaround circle. That meets the town standard, eighty-foot, uh, diameter. And we're also gonna propose full utilities for the site and for the two lots. Uh, we had looked at a T-type turnaround, and I know there was some pushback on that for a safer access and egress. We also looked at coming from Raymond Road, but we've come back to this Redmond Street, uh, layout, which is even for you now, which we think is probably the smallest footprint that we could probably have and still accomplish what we need to do to make these lots safely accessible. Uh, one of the challenges we have that there's a large wetland system that we have to cross, and so, so well-infilling would have to occur for us to improve the road, to access the lots. And in addition to that, crossing a wetland and filling, we're proposing a large box culvert. Uh, yeah, remember there, thank you. Um, we also are gonna have a full stormwater system that will collect stormwater in, from the pavement, from the road, from the driveways. And then that would be directed to an onsite infiltration system, which is actually on the, uh, upper lot, on number four. And we did conduct several test pits, did all the soils onsite. And the soils are actually very good soils, they're sands and gravels. And we found the location where the groundwater was lower, and that's why we show the system where it is now. That was the optimal location for our, um, system. Um, we, one thing we, I did want to point out is that in, to accomplish this, we wanted to minimize the filling of wetland. And we also, from the Conservation Commission right now, uh, but we, we are filling wetland, but we did narrow the roadway, and we were able to use retaining walls on both sides of the road. Uh, that let, that allowed us to have a narrow corridor to reach the full circle. Um, so we do have retaining walls in the right-of-way and retaining wall also partially on the lot, lower lot, number five. And we were able to do that, and that wall helped us do that. We'll have sewer for both houses, it'll be forest maze, it'll go out to the, uh, existing sewer in, uh, Redmond Street. And we'll have a full water line, extend the water all the way down to the end, we're gonna have a hydrant. And, um, I know there were some comments from engineering, just so the board knows, we did send that, uh, I did have a response letter, and we will comply with all the requirements engineering has asked in the comments that they made. Specifically, things like moving the hydrant away from the end of the circle so that it wouldn't get buried in snow, um, items like that. They did, the engineering asked us that we put the wall in an easement. So, as I said, there is a part of a wall that will be on lot number five down below. And so, we will create an easement that, that, so that way the town can actually access the wall and maintain it if, if necessary. We have an, uh, we're proposing an aluminum box culvert. The town has asked us, engineering has asked us to make that a concrete culvert, we will. And we were proposing a segmental wall, and they, the engineering, again, asked us to make it, uh, concrete. So, we're, we're gonna comply with that as well. So, again, I think this is, we've minimized, again, as much as we could onsite the wetland impact, and I think that's what we have. Oh, I did want to add that we are gonna replicate wetlands because we are filling. So, we are replicating onsite too. Um, some of it will be, I see, yeah, all of it will be actually in the lower lot, number five. And we are also proposing to donate a, a piece of land that's off-site remote. It's to the, uh, upper of the drawing. It's an acre, I think, over, over an acre, I think one-point-seven acres of land as well as the replication. That's our mitigation for the wetland disturbance. I think that's it.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to join in?
Um, sure. Uh, summarize, I know, before, it's, it's been a while since we've seen this project, and I just really wanted to give, um, to the applicants, about the cul-de-sac. And we did talk about public safety and some issues, definitely issues with the turnaround. Um, it is still in front of conservation, um, the wetland, there is wetland filling. One of the things that we're kind of trying to work out in terms of understanding the wetland filling, square footage, the roadway square footage. There in the cul-de-sac, there's easements in the cul-de-sac. And so therefore, the property lot area is actually the cul-de-sac. So, it's rather than just the cul-de-sac being the cul-de-sac. So therefore, the houses are closer than the twenty-five-foot setback, um, in the cul-de-sac, which is just a little bit off. I don't know, I.
So, you're saying that the cul-de-sac is not the road, but the cul-de-sac's the.
The cul-de-sac is on the property in an easement, not in a right-of-way layout. So, um, right-of-way layout, so it's kind of simple, right-of-way, and then there's the lot area. So, what?
Twenty-five feet back from the.
And twenty-five feet back would be, be the house. They're, they're a little closer, they're not, they're not right on top of it. But one of the things that we're really trying to understand in looking at this project, the waivers, waivers, as you all know, need to be tied to the public benefit when you're granting them, is understanding how the replication of wetlands, the lot area, um, these, and just kind of how all those numbers come back together. And then look at if we were gonna build, if it was to be to the subdivision rules and regulations, which as you know, if it's built out to the subdivision rules and regulations, um, as prescribed, then you really don't, you can't deny a subdivision. But all the waivers, this has many, um, really kind of looking at, if you did build it out, um, fully, then, then back it into, the waiver should make this better, um, and a better project. Not, as we've said, all, you know, kind of the mantra, the waivers don't make it possible, it makes it better. Um, and just understand that piece of it and understand at the end of the day, what's the lot area and upland slots? Um, I will say from a stormwater perspective as well, the, the, there's a little triangle lot that is owned by the applicant, but not within the subdivision. I think that they, that where their stormwater system will sit, um, we would want that to be common ownership, um, just to minimize confusion. And then, I don't know if you guys, if the applicant has submitted to the Conservation Commission, but I know we were awaiting some, um, stormwater on the number five site, um, stormwater calks. Um, for some of those issues, we did note that from the test pit data, number, this house itself sits, um, a part of the basement, so it looks like it's a little bit below the estimated high-water table. So, that was just a question that we had had. Um, still, you know, talking with engineering about the retaining wall. Um, you guys have clearly had conversations with them about the, um, town standards for roadway and retaining wall and culverts. But anyway, so those are kind of where we are. I did want to make sure that we, since they did have the cul-de-sac, and we hadn't talked about this for a while, we're really just kind of remind all of us, you know, remind each other kind of where we are, our thoughts on the subdivision, and help us all kind of figure out the direction we're moving in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or?
Who's gonna be responsible? How, and what's called that?
Right, it's private way and public use, so who's going to be responsible?
We, we would be responsible until, um, the town were to accept it as a public way. Uh, I believe at the Department Heads Meeting, uh, the town engineer indicated that he would prefer it to become a public way. So, we would be responsible until then. And, um, as far as the, uh, small triangle, uh, at the top of, uh, five Redmond Street, uh, Mr. Murray had said he would deed that to, uh, the owners of number five.
Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay, um, I just have a few questions, and some of them are for staff. So, we're filling wetlands, we're to cross them. Am I correct in understanding? So, those have to be replicated one-to-one, right? Is that what we're seeing?
Um, we, well, we're, we're not looking at a replication plan. Um, they did go in front of conservation for a replication plan for the plan in front of us. Um, I guess I would ask, do you?
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Yes, yes, that's what.
It is, unless you want replication.
Okay, just a few more questions. You said that the houses are closer to the roadway than twenty-five feet, and I understand it's because of their, on the property. How much closer from the edge of rose, roadway to the houses?
The, the driveway is about twenty feet long, so about, it's about five feet closer than you would normally see.
Kind of being twenty-five feet, it's twenty feet?
Yes.
Okay. Will these houses have basements?
Yes.
And you're confident that they will be dry?
Um, they're probably gonna need to be waterproofed, and, because it is a wet area.
Yeah.
But they are, they are high enough that they're mostly out of, from any of the test pit data that I, that I saw, they're above the test, the high groundwater.
Okay, then, my last question is, can this be built without waivers?
That was mine, it all scored five A.
Yes. Is it possible for this to be built without waivers?
Waivers, you mean by sidewalks without any waivers?
Yes, you, you need to be able to show us that it's possible to build this subdivision without waivers. Then if it is, then we consider the waivers and how they might make it better and be in the public interest. But it has to be possible to build it without the waivers first.
I would say it is possible. We do have forty-foot right-of-way, and the waivers that, uh, I think you're addressing are, uh, not the impact statement, but you're addressing sidewalks. And I think that is sidewalk, uh, curbing. Sure, it would increase the, it would increase the wetland impacts. And what we were trying to do and attempting to do, uh, for conservation's sake and the environment, is to create a low-impact.
Course, and development. You can build it.
We could.
Without waivers, if the waivers make less of an environmental impact, that's a good thing. That's what we're trying to get to.
And that's, I, that is what we have done. Sure, we would have more wetland filling if we put sidewalks.
I understand.
And.
Staff, can you confirm that it is possible for this development to be built without any waivers?
Um, as I mentioned, you know, we're, we're how engineers laying it out, but as we're looking at this plan and kind of doing our best to calculate, it would be helpful to understand if it was, if it was to subdivision with regulations, what is that pavement amount, and how does that affect with sidewalks, with twenty-six-foot of pavement? How would that affect the numbers in terms of?
Okay.
Area and wetlands replication and all of those.
So, it looks possible, but we can't confirm it yet, but we're.
I can't confirm, we have, you know, kind of back-of-the-muffin kind of calculations that we've been doing, but we don't have anything exact.
So, to, so to be clear, um, is twenty-six feet, anything less that, is, is that considered a waiver? It is?
Is it a, first, is it a, um, a, a, what's the word I'm looking for? A variance? So, it's, it's one of the waivers that.
It's a waiver, not a variance. Okay.
Is, is this circle, is that considered a waiver as we have it right now, the easement? What's that?
Um, I, I'm not, I don't, I don't have anything in front of me, I don't give you a full answer. The dimension itself, I, I know, is, of pavement is correct.
Because dimensionally, it meets the town standards.
I have to, I can't give you an answer on that.
Well, I understand we're not gonna make a decision tonight. I'm just, it, it's a complicated site, and I think it's gonna take a while for us to understand everything, but I'm just sort of trying to figure it out, and I'll get there. Um, I also would be interested to know if we've heard from any neighbors and what their opinions are. I don't know if that's why the gentleman is here. Are you here on this issue? No, okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, so I, I don't know if we've heard anything from neighbors.
Um, we did in the beginning, it's been continued quite a bit. We didn't, um, uh, we didn't do a lot of.
I sent, I sent notices out to all.
Oh, we did, we just re-advertised.
This.
I know, I did. Um, re-advertized, so.
And it was in the, in the newspaper two weeks.
So.
In a row.
When you heard from neighbors before, were they the neighbors on Raymond Street?
They were.
That's what I thought. And those neighbors are less impacted if it's not going through Raymond's.
But we originally, we first appeared before you, I believe there was at least one neighbor from Redmond Street.
Okay.
Um, maybe two. So, and they were all notified again. And the additional, uh, neighbors on Redmond, uh, Raymond Road were also notified, even.
Okay.
They're beyond.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Um, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The only thing I was looking for is, is there a list, comprehensive list of waivers?
Yes. Submit it, please submit it. It's not.
Oh, it's in.
One, I would request that you guys look at updating it with the new technicals.
I will.
Oh, okay. So, this is not.
Yeah, because it was last time.
It, it actually would be reduced, I think.
Yeah, and when you send us a new waiver, let's, we'll certainly let you guys know.
Yeah, and we'll be up on, yeah, we'll be up on our website.
I, I've been putting everything into viewpoint.
Yes.
Even the submissions to conservation, thinking that.
Well, they will see.
You might want to see them.
Thanks.
I would like to ask if you could make it clear what you're looking for as far as, uh, do you want to know the number or the amount of disturbance? If we were to, uh, wetland disturbance, if we were to create a twenty-six-foot-wide pavement with sidewalks? Is that what you want David to create for you?
So, what we'd like to see is, if you were to build an impervious and recs, what, what are those impacts and, like, what's those, what are those numbers? What's the square footage of impact? What's the, um, and what's the square footage of just about impervious surface? Um, but, but really, and then what does that leave for, um, upland area? But also, if you have to replicate that, what would that leave for upland area? Again, just as.
Oh, okay.
Saying, it's just, what does this look like? And then let's look at these waivers and having that discussion of this waiver is good in, in the public benefit for the neighborhood and the town because. So. Kind of understanding those calculations.
Okay.
And I think we're pretty safe as far as uplands on both lots, but. And I think we're pretty safe as far as uplands on both lots, but, um, do we have number, is house number five that's below the estimated high water table?
House number five?
Yes.
Um, I, I think so, yeah. I, if you look around the test pits, there's a high groundwater, one thirty-five, six, one thirty-seven, nine. And our basement's one forty-one. So I didn't see anything that high.
Some conflict, like, or somewhere. I'm not exactly sure where, but we've got some conflict where is, um, a little bit higher. Um, there's that, there's a floor, but we're also, uh, higher. There are revised four hundred pounds. There's this, if you read it, uh, house two for five.
Well, we did, did an additional test pit because conservation asked us to go out there and confirm it and we did. We did another test and we did get the same results. Uh, so the, the system itself, um, is two feet above the groundwater, the infiltration system, which is what is required. So we do meet the stormwater standards for infiltration.
What about the house itself?
Uh, a- again, the basement's, uh, one forty-one eight and it's above the groundwater. I'm not sure where we're having an issue. The basement on number four is, uh, also about one forty-one sixty-five.
That's on two lots and that's the only way you can get the infiltrator on, uh, for, for whole house number four?
That's where we found the best conditions for soils. That's why we chose that location.
There's no way to get it on one?
I'm sorry, get on one?
Is, right now it's on two separate lots. Is there any way that we can get infiltrator just on one lot?
Well, the system for the road is on one lot. It's only above one, the number five. Um, the other one is just for the house itself, for the roof, the drywells. They have its own, uh, system. Uh, I, I think that's what you're referring to down below.
Uh huh.
Um, well, I don't know if we could pipe it all the way over there, but I could, I could look at that. It's a long ways to pipe it. I can look at that.
Uh, also the retaining wall on both sides, if that becomes a public way, the town, the town would be responsible for that. Is that right, staff? And how, how long, how long is that wall?
At the highest point, it's six feet right at the crossing where the street, where the culvert's going to be. It's kind of about in the middle of the road. Um, I do have elevations on the plan for, um, the wall, so it's about, it starts about two, goes up to about four, and there is that one extreme point where it's six feet. That's the highest point. And then it goes back down to four and three and two. Where is that on the plan?
Staff, can we have like a, a quote for an average make to something?
Um, no, but we are in discussion with engineering.
That would be helpful. We have that as well.
Um, one other quick question. Sure, so, um, it says here in our notes, um, you know that the fire department wants a minimum road width of twenty feet and this is twenty feet in some areas and it's less in other areas. If, if it is twenty, we have to get the calculations if it's twenty feet throughout, because that would change the replication, correct?
Yes.
Especially, I would think it's especially important, important at the, at the beginning of the street where you turn in from Bedford Street to be wide enough for the truck to make that turn. Now, we're not, we're not.
We're, we're only gonna extend the existing pavement out about two hundred and forty feet. So Redmond goes.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry, you're right. I understand. Yeah, yes, yes.
Seventeen feet, seventy-eight.
Yeah.
And I even questioned the nineteen feet at the end, because I went down Redmond Street this mo- this week. And in order to turn around, I had to actually back into two Redmond Streets driveway. That, that's how.
So.
So I, I think that.
Are we?
It's an improvement.
Are we thinking though that we're going to, going to require them to make the drive of the, the roadway twenty feet everywhere? Because if so, that will change calculations.
Yeah, that was the, the recommendation the fire department on this application was the twenty feet.
Think it twenty.
What they're adding.
In terms of, did they respond to say twenty and what they're adding and twenty for the whole? It was a bit, it is what we recommend.
Okay. Uh, so we'll have to address that later at some point. Okay.
So I just, I just want to make sure there, we said that, uh, if the subdivision was approved without the waivers, that we need to go to deed. Correct? Because, uh, well, it's been over five thousand wetlands.
More understanding from conservation, if it's over five thousand, then they, they would need a permit.
Yeah.
Right now it's under. With the waivers.
But to be, to be perfectly upfront, we, we've never really asked for the subdivision, a subdivision to be built up to the strict subdivision standards, because what we've been trying to do is reduce the amount of pavement.
Sure.
Not for the developers.
Right.
For us. Um, and, and I'm thinking that this, this is, uh, this is probably gonna be one of many and I may not be here when the many happen, but uh, since land obviously is so valuable in Burlington, it's become economical to fill wetlands and, or replicate wetlands.
This is why this is so important.
Right.
I agree. That's, that's where I'm going. That's, that's definitely where I'm going and I, I had a question for staff. Are there any other cul-de-sacs that you know of that are actually composed of an easement from public, from private property? Have we done that before? I don't, I don't recall. I don't know. Maybe, maybe the applicant can.
I, I, I think that question was asked of Tom at the, um, at the, uh, department heads meeting and he seemed to indicate yes. Um, I don't know any that I could tell you.
But I think the question, the question. Tom, so we have many streets in town. Some we have on feet, some we have in easement.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that piece is, sure, whatever, easement or feet. The question is, are we using the easement and then still counting it as lot area for building purposes is kind of that different piece of the question.
Right.
But that piece, not very, maybe there's one. I'm not aware of that option, because just because of this conflict of it's being used, but not being used for the property.
Even as we, we first originally submitted this plan, we had a T-type turnaround. Or when we do those and they're, they're pretty, I think, I think maybe even the existing at the end there had a T-type turnaround. So those are almost always an easement too, the driveways, like partially of an easement. I don't see how that's really any different than this, other than the shape of it, or actually this is better, this is better, better conforms better, but it's still in use as a turnaround, but it's part of the lot. Just like a T-type would be, same thing.
So I think, um, i- if there is, I think there are other properties that you're aware of that, that you offer and that, um, mentioned Tom may have some. I think it would be great if you could share those properties with us.
Actually, yeah, I guess we don't need to try to find out, but.
We're not coming to a decision tonight anyways.
Okay.
We'll see you folks again.
Okay.
Um, you know, there, there are definitely some concerns around this range of the water table, um, you know, and, and to hear what Ernie had said, you know, there's, there's a lot of folks, um, in town potentially have some wet basements and, and we've experienced that with other subdivisions and we want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to have more unhappy residents because of another subdivision.
Along that same line, David, uh,
Yeah.
So if you find that the, uh, basement floor is too close to the high water table, can you not and you're building the house, can't you pick up basement?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Absolutely, if we have to, sure.
Without exceeding the height limit, obviously, but.
Yeah. Yeah, we can if we have to, even if it's one foot if it helps.
I mean, if I was gonna live in a house, I'd want, I'd want a safe, red, sorry.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. I understand that, yeah.
Good assistance, I want to show people.
I don't think that's gonna work nowadays.
I give you a word for that. That was a made up, we had a, and this was what's called a blivet.
Okay.
And a blivet is when you try to put ten pounds of you-know-what in a five-pound bag.
We'll have to add that to the urban dictionary later on. Uh, does anyone else have any questions or comments? They have a lot of homework to do and, um, we ask if there's anybody.
I, I will.
Is there anyone in the audience, this is a public hearing, if anyone have any, uh, questions or comments, uh, either online or in the. Seeing none.
Can I ask, uh?
No.
No? Uh, when, when are you before conservation or have you been or will you?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
And we're going to the Board of Health on Tuesday.
So anybody who is listening and interested in what's, patient has to say.
Yes, and, uh, I believe they also notified about this.
Again, I mean.
It might be by email, I'm not sure.
But, okay. They have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter at the Planning Board meeting of October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second, all those in favor?
Okay.
Thank you for coming and saving your day.
Thank you. Thank you.
We don't have any minutes. Brady did not get to the minutes this time around. Doing stellar jobs.
I'll stick continuing on.
Do you have any other matters that you'd like to discuss?
Actually, I have one question, a question in relation to another matter. Staff, but they're probably gonna answer this, but. I have a question, a, a, a problem has arisen down where I grew up and some of the neighbors down there had wanted me.
Where?
It was down in Carolat. And, uh, they weren't able to locate, and I know this has kind of made a big problem, they weren't able to locate me. But I mean, shut off in time. So I guess my question is, do we have a system in place? Because as time goes on, institutional knowledge should go away. I know when my dad was on, knew where every water main shut off in town, right? But there were very few people that knew that. And over time, those people retired and gone. And you run into problems like we're in.
It ended up taking a lot longer because they couldn't find the water main.
Shut off, so, um, and it caused a lot of damage, caused a lot of damage to sewer lines under the ground and now they have to clean out people's sewer lines because of their area of sewer lines and then they want pressurized water hitting them, sand going, anyway. Make a long story short, I, I'm just wondering if this, if there is a, a central, like database or a schematic where all the shut offs are.
Oh, I know that Tom Hayes has an extensive GIS library of a lot of his data. It can't be made public, obviously, for public safety reasons. Um, I can double check. I don't know what the connection is between, I don't know when this happened, if it's on a weekend or something, but, you know, what their communication is like with guys in the field for DPW going down, do they have access to this data? Uh, so that's something that I, we can find out about, but I, I, I know that, um, Tom has, is a really good record keeper and he does have a lot of data for all of this stuff, um, but it's, I think we can definitely look into it back to you.
Yeah, because it, in other words, I would assume that we're in co- cooperation with them, you know, during, when the plans go in, all the new subdivisions will be identified and added to this schematic or database or whatever it is. Question I have is, there are probably, I'm sure there are some that they don't know where they are and you know, the time to find those is before there's an emergency and.
Yeah, so, um, yes, we require ASBO plans for all our subdivisions. They all have utilities, um, they all have the shut offs and the ties and the i- i- in, you know, detailed, you know, from the corner of the house, you know, walk this much to them, you know, to really know exactly where they are, even if somehow they get paved over or something. But, um, there are subdivisions that are very old, um, there are subdivisions for which ASBO plans weren't created. We have defaulted, some, we have, you know, possible defaults, default subdivisions were holding like five hundred dollars from like nineteen seventy-one to do a full ASBO plan of the whole neighborhood. I mean, so I think it's twofold. So where we have the information, engineering's done a great job logging that information. There are areas, we don't have information exactly where things are. When they do what, when they do new work or replace anything, they definitely take that data, put as much data as they can in the system. Um, but to the point of are we really creating new ASBO plans or trying to find and do investigation in some of these older streets, I'm not sure of that answer. Um, but it's a good question. If we don't have the information, are we actively trying to figure out the information?
Yeah, which, the time to do would be now, before you actually deed it. You know, so in other words, if they were able to put together some sort of a plan where you know, by which somebody or, you know, there was gathering, active gathering going on all the time until it was, until we had a complete schematic of the whole town. Database of the whole town.
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure how, what, what the protocol is there. I know engineering is really on top of um, keeping track and putting together really a database of all, of all the information we can have. So.
Is water and sewer part of DPW?
Oh, yeah.
I should think they were.
Yeah, well, some, some of the old fall additions.
Well, that's right, Ben.
But now.
Yeah.
You know, with, you can look into the ground with radar.
Yeah.
Yeah, but your, when was the last time there was a house built in Carolat, so?
Well, that's right. So it's, you know, so, you know, you know, a lot of people have retired in the recent past and it's, you know, a lot of these people have worked under people ahead of them and they, you know, were trained and they, it was almost just one of, it was in their heads.
Right.
Yeah, I know exactly where the main, where the.
That was a computer back.
That's right. And that's the institutional laws is going away and that's, you know.
I know when we did the, uh, Shaw's, uh, development there, there was some work done. Was it drainage towards Carolat, right? So there might be something that ties into that.
There's culverts that go into the back and that, you know, on Susan Ave, which is one street over the pipe house and those kind of, right? That, that was where the work was done to those, to that brook system over there and a culvert going on, I think, yeah. I remember we used to climb in there as kids, that culvert. We used to go, you know, we used to walk in there and go under the ground to where Almy's was.
Maybe money. Should be a certain lump of money put aside here.
Right.
To act, it's like the saying, you know, yeah.
Because you don't want to be finding yourself looking for them during, you know, a water break emergency, you know.
Like.
So we can talk to Tom Hayes. We talked to him a lot, so, awesome, absolutely. Thank you. Uh, one more thing, um, I would like to organize a subcommittee on single-family stormwater issues with, uh, Board of Health, Conservation and Engineering. Um, I think we all know that, that this is kind of a potential issue at hand, um, and we want to make sure that we're protecting the residents. Um, I would be happy to serve that board. I would like, uh, to know if anyone would be willing to join me on that.
So just quickly to preface, um, when we have things in front of us, we talk a lot about stormwater. We don't see single rebuild, tear down, rebuild.
Hmm.
Um, and worse, we internally or from a department perspective are talking with, um, multiple departments, um, building, um, Building Conservation Board of Health, um, Engineering to try to figure out, okay, so you have this fifteen-hundred square foot house. You build a four-thousand square foot house with a three-car garage and a giant driveway. There's a lot more runoff and impervious surface on that site and where is it going and are we regulating it? And are we allow, I mean, and there's still, we don't have any regulation that allows for a single-family house, um, that you have to build it two feet of a water table. You know, so whereas a lot of other towns do. So it's really kind of like these kind of McMansions in these neighborhoods and how is it really affecting water flow in the neighborhoods and where are we, you know, in some ways that in some threshold, people have to do something, but often it's like right under the radar and it's, you know, happening everywhere, so.
Better than a town store.
Um, that's, well, they, we're at a threshold, so it's, you know, um, right now we have five thousand and ten thousand square feet going to, and conservation. But what, I mean, in Winchester, I think it's over two hundred and fifty square feet of additional. You have to go to somebody. So um, just really understanding at what point should we be bringing people in, just to make sure that they're dealing with runoff and water on their property and not to their neighbors. And where we come in, I think whatever we kind of think about this, we would then put all of that in, um, the subdivision of the rights.
Yeah.
Which we get at in conversation, but if they're gonna codify it in the, uh, general bylaw, um, to kind of mirror some of that for single-family homes, just obviously subdivision.
So it'd be both places?
Uh, potentially, and potentially stormwater rights with the Board of Health. Right, so, yes, because we, under zoning, we don't get at the single-family vote.
Right, and we want to catch the, tear down.
That's exactly.
Would have to, we couldn't just.
The tear downs, there's ninety percent of the issues, subdivisions who are here and who are dealing with.
Right. So is there anyone else that would like to join me?
When would you meet?
Sure.
Decide whenever you're, whenever folks are available. I think that it, you know.
If I I wouldn't mind inviting one of us.
Party, let's do it. Okay.
That way, if one of us can't be.
There you go.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for that. Um, the one other thing I sent out in the meeting preview, we need to vote our twenty twenty-two schedule.
Um, it looks beautiful.
The.
I don't like the December date.
Okay, so I I.
I don't wanna come here on my birthday.
So I put in, I took out Labor Day.
Thank you.
And I put in December, cuz it was so early in December. There there's usually, there's two Decembers and one December, but since December was so early this.
We don't approve of the second December date.
I I I suggest we keep that.
You don't have a birthday.
Thanks. We'll make it.
Our birthday last year.
You were very nice. I'm joking, I don't have to change it. I think it looks great, okay, I don't.
Question on the removing the first September date, is that going to mess up us on the.
Our meeting.
Our meeting.
No, and that's why I added, so that one, it's already in the print, it's already gone to print by that meeting. But the January warrant, it goes to print at Christmas, or right after Christmas, and it's really important to have that December date, since are we really gonna be ready December first for January?
For the end of the day, you can't come.
I believe that's why I put the December.
Okay.
The papers.
Um, so do you need a vote, or we just want a blessing? Just vote.
Motion to approve the uh schedule, meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All's in favor. Aye. Post. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Actually, one thing.
Oh, yeah, all right.
I have a quick uh subcommittee report from Economic Development Subcommittee.
Okay.
Couple important things I wanted to add. Uh, one thing I wanted to add about the Pocket Park, which is some uh October twenty-third, seven town center businesses have expressed an interest.
What is that? Cuz I called Barbara, cuz I initially find out about, I saw the thing and it says Pocket Park. I said, well, they.
Twenty-third on Saturday from twelve to six.
I said, what, did they go by us and?
It's just a temporary, one day, temporary, one day.
The beer garden is one.
One day.
The beer farm is one day.
But the park will be there longer, right?
It's just a one-day thing to see how it works.
Um, it's a park with.
We're gonna see, it's a, it's a, it's a pilot.
Right, the park will be there until April of twenty twenty-two.
Oh, wait, so April.
Food goes.
It's till April, that is longer than a day, okay.
But they'll be, they'll be vendors, you know, so folks on X, B, gender, they'll have a table that will be outside right in front of um in front of their establishment and I.
True north.
True north as well.
Roots will be doing a yoga demonstration, Pop Warner will have a table, the library will be doing something called Book and Brew, which I don't know what that is.
Well.
I believe that Sean's.
Read and drink.
Yeah. And my second item is the um, thanks to the Mass Development Grant, the cons- the consultant Catherine Madden of the Madden Group, has started her first three rounds of information gathering this week with interviews with Nord Bloom, Gutierrez, and R.J. Kelly. The second round, um, and staff will be getting an email, they wanna hear from planning, Z B R C, and land use. So the email will detail how they'll get in touch with us, they wanna hear our thoughts and concerns on it. And the third round is gonna be a community forum on November second, it'll be online at seven P M, where they're gonna open it to the community and hear the community's thoughts on the mall gateway and mall redevelopment plan from that Mass Development Grant.
Right, what will it be?
The um, we got the Mass Development Grant, and they're, they hired the consultant to take a look at the gateway to the mall road.
They're they're just a mall road.
Yeah, mall road.
Yeah, yeah.
Not the mall, sorry, not.
I was like.
Mall road. I forgot, I forgot if people were mall road.
Okay.
You cheer, just you all sit.
I'm all set.
Just uh kudos to staff for getting that uh ninety-five thousand dollars.
We say it?
Yes, we can say say it, we just can't do press.
Oh, sorry.
Congratulations.
Great part.
We did get a um.
That's awesome.
A one, a community one-stop grant to do a feasibility study for the Plaza de la Roca.
Excellent.
Um, and a lot due in large part to the um efforts, and we thank town meeting for the efforts of the rezoning efforts that we've been looking at down there and all, and really trying to transform the quarter.
Will ninety-five thousand dollars do a whole study or just a piece?
Well, it's a feasibility study, we really wanted to look at, as you know, even the flooding issues, the pedestrian circulation issues. Um, will ninety-five thousand dollars give us a build-ready plan for the corridor? No, but will it really highlight a lot of the issues and what we need to do to accomplish these issues? Yes.
Thank you.
So we're solving this.
Thank you.
I I don't have an understanding about pocket parks, you know. So I, you know, where did that come from? Who, how how you do a po- a pocket park without it going by the plan? You know.
Because it's temporary.
Temporary, that's why.
I don't care if it's for a day, you know, really, we, if you're gonna have a place where people are gonna go, if it's a park, people are gonna sit, kids are gonna play in a park, people are gonna eat in a park.
I think.
And I think it, it, you know, there ought to be somebody who's involved with traffic and so forth that says, you know, you're gonna have to change this intersection, cuz there's gonna be a lot more activity there if there's a pocket park than there is now.
There was a what?
I I think I think it's a mistake for them to proceed without coming to the fore if you want to.
Well, the way they're doing it, I can answer that question, is it is under, because of COVID, there was the governor ordered a state of emergency order. The governor's task force, which the order was extended till April twenty-two, allowed things like this to happen, like putting tables on streets with protections to help reinvigorate the business, so this falls under that, and again, it's only temporary.
That's how it was done, so if it becomes a permanent thing, I think it will.
It'll come before.
Okay.
Yes, and and to.
I don't want anybody to get hurt.
Oh, great, and and uh Kristen and Mike and I were involved with someone's selectmen and uh uh to interview this process with.
So you as the chair of the planning board, I I would hope if you are working with the board of selectmen and so forth along that that, you know, you would be open to that standpoint.
And and we do, and if it's just like you said, if it's a long-term thing, then we would, it would, it would come in front of us. And I asked the question, and if this, we were told that because it's already approved through the COVID regulations, that it wasn't going to come in front of us.
There was also a walkthrough with Melissa Dentakalas, um, Mike Murray, Deputy Chief Kirschner, I was there. Um, the woman from the uh event planning was there.
Uh huh.
Um, Selectman Ryan and Selectman Ogan were there, all talking about these issues.
And the temporary task force.
I'll make it there for a beer. Board of Health and.
Oh, no, I just, I just, it's strange, I, you know, I, he's the governor or somebody saying, okay, it's Pocket Parks and doesn't have to go through an review or anything else, and it's, it's, it says it's a park.
Well, it's.
Yeah, it's not.
It's painful, cuz I was concerned too, when I thought it was a permanent park, I liked the idea, but I wanted to make sure we had ballards and things to feed in a crosswalk and things to make it safe. As I understand it now, it's just like where we let them put.
Tables for the.
Tables out in the, in the parking lot with just some jersey barriers and stuff, so there there are these temporary outdoor spaces that are allowed between now and April.
And sculpture for the sculpture.
That's right, John Sachs is.
Yep.
We can see how it goes and hopefully, hopefully, you know, there won't be anything, cuz I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for everyone to gather and if, you know, we need to do a longer term plan, but.
What makes happen?
No, I'm just saying, I hope. I hope it works, I'll look and try.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
opposed.